Okay. Are we ready? Emily's online, and welcome to the September 2nd, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. We're so glad you're here. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy, absent. Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The President of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one request at this time. The CCHS band. We have Cooper, Haley, and Leo. Wait a minute, Leo's not in the band, is he? So, that's you? Are you? Oh, okay. Good man. Why don't you come on up and let us know what you're about? And tell us what's going on.
Good evening, everyone, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. To start off, thank you for letting us be here today. I'm Cooper Martell. I'm a drum major of the Tiger Pride Marching Band.
I'm Haley Cornelius. I'm the other drum major of the Tiger Pride Marching Band.
My name's Leo Evans. I'm in the band, but I'm also just my dad's son, so.
It's those small feet.
It's such a great opportunity for us to be able to be here and like just get to practice the traits that made us be able to be student leadership in our band and everything. The band is really, well, first off, very active in the school. We play at all the pep games. We play at all the pep assemblies. You know. One of my favorite things about the band is that everyone in the band is very involved in all kinds of different activities, extracurriculars, all kinds of things at the school. All three of us are in encore. Many people in the band are in athletics, all those kinds of things. So it's super cool, just such a big mix of hardworking students all getting to be together. We're also very involved in like community things such as, you know, the Parade of Lights. That's more of a community thing. Sometimes we just do community service things like for a couple of years now, we've done Christmas caroling with our instruments at the Hildebrand Care Center. We help host the Blossom Music Festival, which is a big deal in the community. We bring in a lot of students from other schools to come compete with us, other bands for the parade, all those kinds of things. So, yeah. But one of the coolest things that we get to do is our competitions at the statewide level, and I'll let Haley talk about that.
Okay, every season, our band goes on about six or seven out-of-town trips to marching invitationals across the state to compete with our field show, which is called Scars of Gold this year. And we compete against other high school marching bands. These competitions are truly the highlight of everyone's season, and it brings a big bond throughout the whole band just going on these trips because they can be 30 minutes to an hour to two hours away. This is an amazing doorway to turn our talents and passions into something that we can use to represent not only our band, but our school and even our community. The grand finale of all of these competitions throughout the year is the CBA Regionals and State Competition in late October. On October 15th, we will be heading to Fountain Fort Carson to compete in our regional competition. And if our score is high enough, we will proceed to go to state finals, which are located in Stocker Stadium in Grand Junction on October 27th. And then, given we place high enough in semifinals, onto the finals competition that same night, that is where we will go. Our band has a long line of legacy at this competition, where in 2017, our band was awarded the title of state champions that year. Up next, we have our fundraising, and I'll let Leo take the podium.
As you might assume, these competitions get pretty expensive. Like, we gotta pay for sound equipment, props, food. And our Tiger Pride Band Boosters, which are our parents who help fundraise for our school, they fund all that. And as the years go on, our band has been getting a lot smaller, just because it's been losing popularity in the school. So it's been harder and harder to reach that goal, our fundraising goal for the year. So, we come here to ask for help, and that if you have any businesses, or if you have any like personal, if you just want to help support us, we're gonna leave a flyer, and we're gonna leave some door hanger cards where you can contact us to just find out more information and just let us know if you guys would like to help us. Thank you.
Any questions of the young people of council? Yeah, would you give those to Cindy, the information? Amy?
Not a question, just thanks so much for what you do for our community, and thanks so much for coming. I know it can be a little nerve-wracking maybe to do public speaking, so really appreciate the time that you guys took, both in leadership in your band, as well as to come and share with us what you're doing. I, for one, am pledging here and now to reach out because I would love to support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Also, if you want to come watch our show, we are gonna perform at the high school's next football game, home football game, next Friday.
Next Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully, we see you there.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. Any councilmember announcements and/or board updates? Anyone? Amy?
Thank you. I have a couple. First off, the Colorado Suns Best of Colorado list is out, and in case folks didn't already know, we have the best library in southwest, in the southwest corner of Colorado, which is a really, really huge accomplishment. They had some really stiff competition from a lot of other nominees, and they were voted in as the best library in the southwest portion of the state. Our museum was also honored by being one of the runners-up for best museum in the southwest quadrant of the state. And it would take the rest of the meeting time to list every single Fremont County and Canyon City honorary, but suffice to say, we had a lot of local businesses that took top honors in their category, or were nominated, or were a runner-up. So encourage everyone to check out the list and then go and patronize our local businesses. And if you see library or museum staff, to give them the shout-out that they deserve. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? We do have General Government tomorrow here at 5:00, 6:00?
Six.
I won't miss it this time, will I? So, anybody else? Okay, well, Emily, I want to wish you and Dell good health. I hope that he heals well and is back at home to bother you a great deal, but again, our thoughts are with you, and we hope that his health is back and back at home. So, but Emily, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. He's not back home yet, but we're working on it.
Okay. And we look forward to a really good update when he's back, so, thanks. Okay. All right. This evening, we have a proclamation. Oh, Amy?
Sorry, I also have a committee update.
Oh.
So the Red Canyon Trails Committee just wanted to let folks know that the trails are now 100% completed. We are looking to schedule the groundbreaking, or not the groundbreaking, the grand reopening, maybe, towards the end of this month or early next month. We'll obviously publicize it and ensure that all of you are aware as well. And also, the, this is a little complicated, but essentially, we are putting forward renewed camping at Red Canyon Park. It'll just be 15 sites, resurfacing the road, two new vault toilets, refreshing the current vault toilets, and that is being considered for a state grant that we have been put in for by the Pike's Peak Outdoor Recreational Alliance. So just a shout-out to Rex in particular for answering lots of questions very quickly, but also Brandy and Rick and Ryan. So, not a done deal, but hopefully, we will have the state pay for kind of refreshing that up at Red Canyon. So, over.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? All right, then I'd ask Brenda McDermott to come forward. We have a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month, which is the month of September, and I would like to read that proclamation. Whereas Canyon City is home to more than 1,700 people, a place of destination for thousands of visitors annually, and the site of about a dozen state and federal correctional facilities. And whereas the Fremont County Coroner reported 26 suicides were investigated in 2024, three of which were offenders in the state or federal prisons. Whereas 90% of those who died by suicide had a diagnosable mental health condition at the time of their death, according to the American Federation of Suicide Prevention. And whereas in 2024, suicide was Colorado's seventh-leading cause of death and the second-leading cause of death for ages 15 through 44. And whereas, on average, there are 132 suicides per day in the U.S., and whereas, 54% of Americans have been affected by suicide in some way. Now therefore, is proclaimed by me, Preston Troutman, Mayor of Canyon City, as September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month in Canyon City. And we do counsel, the council urges all people Canyon City to become educated on suicide prevention awareness and support those affected by suicide during this month throughout the year. And I signed that proclamation. So would you like to add anything to that, Brenda?
First off, I would like to thank you and everyone for being here and allowing me to speak, sorry. As you said, my name is Brenda McDermott, and I got involved with the walk, this is the ninth annual walk that we're doing here in Canyon City. And the first year I did it with Jessica Cobbler, who started the walk here nine years ago, and then at eight years, I joined her committee, and I've been on the committee ever since. With Jessica moving, I stepped up and became the chairperson for the committee. So this Saturday, September 6th, at 9:00 a.m. is the check-in and registration over here at Centennial Park, so if anybody has some time and a couple of hours, it's a short walk, two hours. We have a silent auction, and we have some resource tables available, different associations that come and help us. We typically have around 200 people. It's a nice event. They walk around the river and have a turning point and come back. So it's a nice event, and I hope everybody can join us. The reason I started in 2009, I lost my daughter to suicide at the age of 17. And something a parent never gets over, we don't get through it. We just lean on each other, and we hope to raise awareness, and we never want them forgotten, and we don't want anybody else to go through it. So I really appreciate everything that you have done to help us, get the word out, to support us. And I don't know if anything else.
I shared at the commissioners' meeting, yeah, we helped Jessica start this years ago, and she moved, and we started it because of her son Dalton, and I like to say her son's name and Lindsay's name. She emailed me in 2015 and said, "Why don't you do anything about Suicide Prevention Month?" And I said, "What do you want us to do? We don't talk about it," you know? And she wanted, her son was the Florence High School valedictorian. He was set to go to School of Mines in just a couple of months at the time that he died. And Jessica wanted to reach other parents and community members in general with a powerful and heartfelt message that if it can happen to my family, it can happen to yours. So that was the message she wanted to get out, and I think Brenda, too. For me, I've not lost a loved one by suicide, but I've learned some valuable information and powerful tools that are, and I learned that it's important to be prepared, so when somebody comes to you with those thoughts, you know how to handle it and not be scared, and that's happened to me twice. And I just wanted to remind people of the suicide crisis, lifeline 988. And thank you.
So that's just dial 988?
Yes.
Okay. And would you tell us again when your event's going to be in time?
It's going to be this Saturday, September 6th, at Centennial Park. The registration, check-in starts at 9:00. The walk will start at 10:00. We're typically done by 1:00 o'clock, we're out of the park. There is a website you can go to and register now, www.afsp.org/fremont. So anybody can go on there, you can get pre-registered, you can make a donation, you can start a team, you can walk just as an individual, you can show up there and register as well. But we just encourage everybody, if you have some time Saturday morning, to please join us.
Okay. And we would like to come, you come forward, and we'll take a picture with the proclamation.
Absolutely.
And we'll go down front.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all. Number seven is the consent agenda. I'd ask the city administrator to review the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the Regular City Council Meeting on August 18th, Division Committee Meeting on August 20th, and Special Meetings on August 19th and August 20th. 7B authorizes the city administrator to sign a service agreement with Legal Liability and Risk Management Institute for Police Department Training in an amount not to exceed $7,500. 7C authorizes the city administrator to sign a service agreement with Sigma Tactical Wellness for Officer Wellness in an amount not to exceed $12,450. 7D is to approve Traffic Code Schedule Revision Number 60. 7E awards bid 67-25, annual 8102 polymer purchase to NELCO in an amount not to exceed $60,000. 7F awards bid 68-25, water meter purchase to Ferguson in an amount not to exceed $12,546. 7G is to receive and file cash disbursements, and 7H is to receive and ratify cash disbursements.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any additions or corrections? Amy?
Thank you. On 7B, I understand that the city has been in touch with the Legal Liability and Risk Management Institute to get an updated service agreement to reflect kind of what the intended planned way forward is. And I was just wondering, is that, I don't think it changes the amount of 7,500, it just changes the scope of who is to be covered? Are we able to, do we need to say, when making the motion, do we need to essentially say, taking into account the updated service agreement, given that it won't be provided to professional staff?
I think that's actually 7C.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah.
Apologies.
Yes. We could do it as amended or with the amended scope of service.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to do that, then?
I think when you make the motion, that would be acceptable.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? No, then I would ask for a motion and a second. Would you like to make that motion? Amy?
I would be delighted to. Mayor Troutman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with 7C, noting that the service agreement with the amended scope of services and the agenda as written.
Good, thank you, Amy. Second by Andrea. Any questions on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you all. And now for the long-awaited, I say that every time, right? Administrator's report. I invite you to have that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have the written reports in the packet, some additional information. We have the RFP for the Royal Gorge Bridge is closing later this week. The Integrated Insight, the consultants that are helping us evaluate, they are gonna be evaluating all the proposals and getting a shortlist together and working with the committee, the selection committee, to schedule interviews. So we anticipate scheduling that meeting with Integrated Insight the week of the 15th. So, you know, big steps coming forward for the Royal Gorge Bridge RFP. With that, I'm happy to take any questions about the written report or any other questions.
Amy?
Thank you. With regard to the Bridge RFP, will Integrated Insight be providing the selection committee the entirety of all of the firms' proposals that have bid, along with their recommendation as to the top ones, so that we have the complete understanding of the proposals that have come forward?
Yeah, we can provide all of the proposals, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I had a question, had a brief conversation about the RFP for the Gateway Project. Did you mention that, or did I miss that?
I did not. We had a meeting today with the selection committee for the Gateway Project, and we interviewed four firms last week, and we've got two firms, or the top two firms that've been, or it's been whittled down to the top two firms right now, with some additional questions going back to them. So we're hoping to have that on the next meeting for approval. If not, it'll be that first meeting in October.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, let's move on then to the Discussion 9, Introduction and Adoption by Title Only of Resolution 9 Series 2025, entitled, "The Resolution Extending the Multifamily Housing Development Incentive Program." Could we have a city administrator report?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution that would extend the multifamily development incentive program. This program was initially installed in 2021. This would be second or third renewal of the extension. This provides a reduced building permit fee for 40% of any housing developments over 20 units or more, and then it also changes the calculation used for multifamily housing for those tap fees. So you pay the full rate on that first 3/4-inch tap, and then 50% of the 3/4-inch tap after that for multifamily projects. To date, the St. Scholastica Development is the only known recipient of the incentive program. We have had several folks who have called and asked about it. It is something that we use from an economic development standpoint when we ask if, when we're asked if there are housing incentives. Staff would recommend approving Resolution 9 and renewing this for another two years. We also have Rick Harmon, the Economic Development Manager, here to answer any additional questions.
Any questions of council for either Ryan or Rick? Amy?
Thank you. I understand the importance of having it on the books and being able to point to it and refer to it. I think when we originally put this on the books, we really did want to see an increase in multifamily housing applications, and it doesn't seem like this has really led to that. So I guess I would ask, maybe before it comes back next time, could we have some city thought go into what could lead to the desired outcome of additional multifamily housing? Because I think when we talked about this originally a couple of years ago, this was intended to be kind of like one piece of a puzzle that would incentivize folks to come in and do that sort of development, and it just doesn't seem like it's had quite that intended effect yet. Again, not saying that we shouldn't continue to have it as an option and continue to have it as something that we can refer to, but would just like to see some more creative thought go into what else can we add?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Would you like to add anything, Rick, or?
No. No, thank you. I know that multifamily is needed. In my business, it's a huge project oftentimes, and the rents that they would create sometimes doesn't come anywhere close to what the cost of building new facilities are. And therefore, those people prefer to go to an area where, so I think that when the incomes catch up, and do you think we can find places that could provide that land, then I think this would kick in. But right now, we just don't have that income multiple that justifies the incredible expense to build these multifamily projects. Yeah, that and the cost of development and our demographic profile makes it more feasible to do projects in higher-population areas that can be built to economies of scale. And we don't have that here right now.
You know, one of the discussions that we could have, and it's totally probably off-base a little bit, and stop me if, I don't, you know, but is the cost of infrastructure to get to that project? And I think the city ought to take a long, hard look at being a participant in that in some fashion to bring those utilities to that. It is okay for the cost of the tap, but if there's no underground water or anything to it, it's not gonna fly necessarily, and that's expensive.
Yeah, and that's what makes it honestly probably more difficult for us, simply because of the size of the project you're looking at. The cost of infrastructure is astronomical compared to if you could build 200 units, or 300 units, or 400 units. The cost of infrastructure per unit is large, larger here. So coming up with a way to incentivize that would help significantly, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Any other questions of council? At this time, then, I would look for a motion and a second. Who would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I move to approve Resolution 9 Series of 2025.
Second.
Second by Kathy, thank you. Any discussions of that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, thank you again. Thank you, Rick. B, Introduction and Adoption by Title Only of Resolution 10 Series 2025, entitled, "The Resolution Authorizing Assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a Private Activity Bond Allocation of the City of Canyon City Pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Ceiling Allocation Act." Would you review that, please?
Actually, Rick, do you want to come up and present this one?
I'm not sure what I said, but I said it.
Yeah, private activity bonds are an interesting tool that the state has for us if we can generate enough private activity bonds to actually be able to issue bonds. The challenge we have with this program is they award, they allocate private activity bonds to populations above 15,000, I believe is what it is. And they graduate those amounts based on the population, and they allow us to carry them forward for a few years, but that would literally leave us with probably $3.5 or $4 million of bond authority, which does not pencil when you issue bonds. Normally, you're gonna want like 20, 30 million dollars. So a lot of communities will call around other communities and ask for them to allocate their private activity bonds to them. Fremont County was allocated 2.17 million or something like that this year, and I think last year, they may have transferred some of theirs to another community that requested it. I've been asked, I think on two occasions since we were allocated bonds to transfer to a different community. The first year we were allocated bonds, Ryan and Cory and I sat down and said, "Does it make sense for us to even..." make sense for us to even entertain keeping these, or, you know, if we don't keep them, we can transfer them to somebody else, or we can allow them to roll back to the state?" We opted, since it would take us years probably to accumulate enough, enough bonding authority to actually issue something, we opted to transfer to an organization that is providing services in our community, and that's CHAFA. Quite honestly, we've had a couple of low-income housing, one low-income housing tax credit project that was denied by CHAFA twice, so I sent a little nasty gram off to CHAFA, saying that we are allocating our private activity bonds to you. I certainly expect to see a return in terms of a low-income housing tax credit project. But they do put, they do support our housing community by providing loans to our single-family homes. They also provide assistance to multifamily if and when it happens, so they are in our community pretty regularly. It just hasn't translated yet into low-income housing tax credit project. So, we'll be having more conversations about that in the coming days and weeks, and we are still working with this low-income housing tax credit project to see if they are interested in trying one more time next year. But, that's, that's the background on private activity bonds. Happy to take some questions if you have them. Cory's the expert on them now, I think, now that he took his glasses off and he's ready to relax.
Any questions of Rick or Cory? Amy?
Thank you. Do we know why CHAFA denied the request twice?
Uh, we know, we, we, we think the second time, and this is from the developer, the second time, we think it's because the land wasn't provided at no cost. And I believe the first time was probably similar. I've been told by some in the housing community that third time's the charm. If a housing developer can last three years, that they're more likely to receive tax credits.
And Councilmember Schmisher, that's what I was going to say, is that while there is no formula, based on what I have seen, it often takes a second or third application, even for known affordable housing developers that have done projects with CHAFA over the years, to get approved. So, it is not at all uncommon, what Canyon has experienced is very similar to what other communities have experienced with their affordable housing developments with CHAFA.
Thank you. That context is, is helpful. I think my other question is kind of on the flip side. I understand that, that y'all met and talked about kind of the first year that, that this came across our radar, that it really wasn't sufficient to, to make it worthwhile, or, or make projects pencil. Have, in the subsequent years, have you reached out to any low-income developers that are operating in our community to kind of ground truth that with them? To see whether or not they think that it would be helpful if we actually kept and used our, our PABs?
I think the challenge with that is you can only, you can only collect them and retain them for a certain number of years. So, as Rick mentioned, you have to get to a certain threshold for it to, for it to pencil. The costs, the, the legal costs and the, having all the experts and consultants to issue these types of bonds are very expensive, and there, there has to be that point of return, that return on investment in order to actually utilize the, these bonds. And I, I don't think at the, at the level that we're receiving them, I don't think that we would have enough to meet that threshold.
Yeah, it would be twenty-plus million at least to, to, to collect this much authority, bonding authority. If we were to roll ours, retain ours, we would get into this, this rolling cycle of lapsed authority.
So, it's more that the administrative cost of administering them is too high, not that
Correct.
a developer wouldn't have utility in kind of adding this to their, their capital stack?
Correct.
Okay. Have we, one more question, and then I promise I'm done. Have we reached out to the state to let them, I mean, I'm quite confident that they are aware that this really would only benefit communities that are receiving sufficient dollar amounts to not have that administrative, you know, overhead, not make it make sense, but have we formally let them know that this is problematic and you are not actually helping us with our low-income housing needs?
I have not.
Because if not, I think, I, I for one would like us to send a letter and make sure that we are clearly communicating that.
We, we could send a letter. Absolutely.
I think Rick's letter hit the nail on the head, but maybe CHAFA didn't care for it much.
Well, I, I
He was pretty direct.
I haven't gotten a very direct response yet, except from Caroline, who said she passed it on to, to let you know. But I did have an opportunity in a recent housing discussion with, CHAFA was, was supposed to be there, they couldn't be there, but with the Division of Housing, shared my misgivings over our status. I mean, that, that's not the first time that I think we were, what I consider, I don't want to say it's inappropriate, because it takes a while to get tax credits, it really does, but we've had a couple of instances, one in particular, where, where Division of Housing money was quote-unquote "allocated" to us and in the eleventh hour pulled from us, it was no longer available, and that killed the deal. So, that, that's painful. So, when this one didn't happen, I, I was not happy about that either.
Andrea?
Okay, Rick, at some point, like, like four or five, ten questions ago, you mentioned something about some, a deal or two might have fallen through because CHAFA expects the land to be free? So, is that something that we need to think about and plan ahead for?
Yeah, and we've talked about it in the past, and Ryan and I were talking about it this morning, actually. A lot of communities will buy land, land bank, for the purpose of transferring that property into a public, into a
Public.
a low-income housing project, or a housing project in general. It's not uncommon for private developers to donate that land as well. It just tends to be the case that private property owners can't wait long enough, can't hold their property long enough, to carry it through the process of entitlement and through the process of bonding. So, communities are buying, urban renewal authorities are buying property to hold the property for development. In the, in this case, the property was, is owned by the fire district. We did not necessarily approach the fire district and ask them to donate the property.
I, I've had informal conversations.
You did have, yeah. But that's, that's the rea, and that's what we're competing with in other communities too. A lot of urban renewal authorities, once they, once they started discussing how can tax increment financing be used for housing, that's really kind of what they're doing. They're buying property and dedicating that property, transferring it over to a project that makes it feasible. In our case, we haven't done that.
Thank you. Maybe that's something we, we need to look at down the road and maybe talk to URA about. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Any other questions regarding this? I forgot, what was that? So, they, do we got a motion? That's for motion? Did we do that already? Go ahead, John.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend, I move that council approve Resolution Ten, Series of 2025, authorizing the mayor's signature on Resolution Ten, and the assignment of allocation, and authorizing the attorney's signature on the certificate of the City of Canyon City concerning the assignment of private activity bond volume cap allocation, the assignment of private activity bonds to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority.
Second.
Second, Kathy, thank you. Any discussions on that? Hearing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you again. Let's go to C, which is Introduction and First Reading by Title Only of Ordinance Twelve, Series 2025, Firearms in Sensitive Spaces Opt-Out Options. Could we have a review by our administrator?
Yes, sir. As many of you know, we've had, we've had several conversations about this particular topic. Up until the state passed legislation, I'm sorry, Cory, when was that, when they passed the?
Two thousand? Two thousand twenty-four legislative session.
Thank you. Up until the point where the state passed that legislation, open carry and concealed carry was allowed in, in the city buildings. When it was, when that legislation went into effect, the city was given an opportunity here to opt out of participating in the state legislation. So, before council, you, you have three options tonight. You can do nothing, which, you know, has, you know, the effect of the state's revised statute taking, taking hold, which is a ban on open carry and conceal here in city buildings and sensitive spaces. You have an option with opting out of concealed carry, or, I'm sorry, open carry, and then you have an option to allow both. And Chief Schick, I don't know if you want to come up, there may be some questions for
So, how, any discussion from council? Okay, Amy?
Thank you. I actually have a question for our attorney. I think, I'd like to better understand, if we have a city ordinance that permits open and/or concealed carry in City Hall, does that automatically extend to the area behind the glass? And if it does, like, what options do city staff have if there is, if, if there's a concern about an agitated citizen who is carrying? Thanks.
City staff has to follow the ordinance as, as drafted. One possibility that is, I guess, a door number four, since Ryan gave you three options, is to define the, so, one of the areas is any building in which the official office of any elected member of the city council or city administrator is located. And one option would be to refine that, to say the space is open to the public within which, within any building. So, that would essentially, if you were paying your utility bill, for example, or had a meeting in here that's open to the public, that would be considered open, but the area behind the glass, if you will, would not. What we can't do is, sort of on a case-by-case basis, if a city employee believes they are, has a concern, unless there is some reason that creates the possibility of, of risk where we would call the police, we can't say, "I'm uncomfortable with this person they may be carrying," and therefore treat that person differently than someone else. But we can differentiate within the City Hall building.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful to, to kind of understand that nuance, because I, it sounds like I just wouldn't want to possibly put our city staff in a position where they may be entering legally gray area. But Ryan, or City Administrator Stevens, do you have thoughts?
And the one thing I would add is, so practically speaking, if that was a, an option council thought was appropriate, you'd, you'd essentially have signage that said, "No firearms beyond this point," or something like that. So, it would be, it would be addressed with signage essentially to show the area that wasn't open to the public.
I'm sorry, you had a question?
Oh, I just, I wasn't sure, and this may be new information to you, but I, I just don't know
No.
if you have thoughts on kind of, do we make that distinction or not? It seems like probably the glass was put up originally to have a divide between public area and, and staff area, but...
Yeah, I, I would concur with that. I think, you know, we have a secured area for a reason, and that, that is for some staff protection, and, you know, if, if we were to move forward, I, I think it would be prudent to make that distinction.
Sorry, just one more thought on this.
No, go ahead.
Because I, I think my, like, my desire would always be that city staff welcome people back to their offices, and like, they are, you know, we are here to, to serve the people of Canyon City, so I wouldn't want there to be this, like, tension or discomfort with how to interpret that, and it, it seems like may, maybe what I hear you saying is, like, if they, if, if it's clearly signed and messaged that firearms aren't permitted in the secure area of the building, then people would just know that they need to lock up their, their weapons and their vehicles, or what have you, before they come in for a meeting with city staff. I think the last thing I would want is for people to not be welcomed into their house to have meetings with city staff because of the way that we craft an ordinance.
Okay, more discussion? So, which one, we're recommending, the one that would allow in all areas except, and only in the public area of City Hall? That would be the amendment change to that particular ordinance?
It, it would, but you would still have to determine whether you were addressing open and concealed, or just concealed.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I guess I want to be sure we're all clear in talking about the same thing. Have we decided yet which of the two draft ordinances we're looking at in order to see if there's any amendments are needed? I mean, I, I can say what my preference is overall, but I want to be sure that we're all communicating in a way that we know what everyone's preferences are, and then how to put that into the ordinance.
Discussion from anyone? What's your preference?
I think that, in reality, my, my concern and my constituents who have spoken to me about it is that they, we would rather not have open carry during a meeting, a council meeting, in here, because it, it tends to intimidate people who might want to say something, and they'd be intimidated against saying it. But the reality is, we have no way of screening for people who are carrying concealed weapons. And I think to let them opt out makes sense to me personally, because they do have to pass a test and have a background checked if they have a permit, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
For concealed carry? Okay. So, but we have no way of screening people who come to meetings to make sure they don't, they're not carrying concealed. So, to say that we opt, you know, that, that you're not allowed to conceal carry is kind, it's silly, because we don't have any way of screening that, and it would be very expensive, including we'd have to have someone, you know, one of our officers here to, even if we had a Magneto to check it, we need someone to operate it.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, it can't, it's not automated, there's no automatic way to do it. So, to me, that's what makes the most sense, and so, but, you know, if we just do nothing, then I think that's rejecting the reality of where we live and, you know, people who do concealed carry. So, that's, that's my thought, for what it's worth.
Kathy? Kathy?
I agree with what Andrea was saying. It's basically the physical viewing of a firearm that have, might have the tendency to intimidate a speaker or somebody. So, again, not being able to prove one way or the other on concealed, I would be fine with just eliminating open carry.
I, I kind of agree also. We have to be cognizant that all of us, I think most of us, we're all pro-gun, we're not, you know, we're, we're all like our rights, but that's not everybody, so someone attending a meeting may be intimidated and may choose not to attend a, a meeting because they feel differently. So, we just have to be cognizant of how everyone feels about this. So, I'm okay, yeah, the open carry is just an intimidation factor for me as well.
So, the, just talking process here a little bit, it seems to me that council is focusing on the, the first ordinance presented to us in our packet, with possibly the addition of under A three to say, "Any building in which the official office, any building open to the public, in which the official office of any elected member of the city council or city administrator is located," would deal with the glass portion.
Yeah, I, I think the language could be as simple as at the very beginning of
Yeah, I think the language could be as simple as at the very beginning of subsection three of subsection A, the spaces open to the public within, and then the rest could remain the same.
Would you say that again, please? I'm not sure I followed you.
The spaces open to the public within, and then any building in which the official office of any elected member of the city council or city administrator is located, that would have the effect of saying you can bring your concealed carry, your concealed weapon into City Hall when you're doing city business, but it would not be allowed behind the glass. Now, is there a way to legislate that? We're not going to have people searched if they go back beyond the glass. But if someone is then found to have that weapon, they would be violating our code and could be prosecuted.
They could be denied entry if the, if it was.
They could be denied entry and they could also, if they made, made it back there and then it was discovered, you know, if someone went like this and you saw their holster or something, that could be prosecuted in municipal court.
Is that your hand still up, Emily?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, ma'am, are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thanks. Yeah, I just, I had a quick comment and then a question. My comment is that I agree with what's been said by several council members, Stein and Worthington and Maloney so far. And I, I think that that change, if we decide to go with that change, the wording of which our attorney just mentioned for A3, I think that works too. I just want to be sure that, do we think that we don't need specific language about open carry? I, I just want to be clear on that because this is talking about people with valid permits for concealed carry, but are, do we need any other language about open carry that is prohibited, period?
We certainly can, but because of the provisions in Senate Bill 131 that we are essentially opting out of, it's not necessary. Again, it could be added more as, as a messaging to the public, it's not necessary for legal enforcement.
That helps, thanks. I, I mean, I would suggest maybe we put a phrase in, maybe in A, the beginning there, something about open carry, and just be specific where open carry is not allowed, and then go from there about the people with valid permits for concealed carry, just to make it clear in our own ordinances.
So you would be using, a person holds a, a person may carry and possess a firearm upon the following property of buildings, any chamber or gallery where the city council is located, except for open carry? I mean, would we have to rewrite this and bring that back?
I think you're looking at the version that would both opt out of open and concealed. If you look at the first version on page 117 of the packet, that's the version we're, I think, looking at amending. We could certainly modify it, and it may be easier to modify.
Perhaps could just be a sentence, an added sentence to A, just a brief sentence about what's prohibited.
I think it would actually be in C. And we could identify it there, because if you look, if you go further down, it talks about a person commits a misdemeanor if they are carrying a firearm openly and not concealed in the following locations. And so there, we would modify the language similarly in C3 to match A3.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
So concealed carry would be permissible in city council meetings, but not open carry? Am I reading that here? All right, it says any building owned by the city in which official meetings of the city council is currently taking place. So it doesn't, it says other, all are places that we may have a committee meeting. Number one just says chambers or galleries where the city council is located. This is where we're located. Any building owned by the city in which an official meeting of the city council is currently taking place. Is that elsewhere?
So if we were having a meeting at the library, for example, it would be prohibited to open carry at the library during the times of the meeting, is that correct, Cory?
Yes.
I think that makes me a little bit nervous because if that's, how would people know that we were having an official meeting at that location? And I think I would just be, like, if it's a misdemeanor to do some, how, I guess, how would we ensure that people had the knowledge to not unintentionally?
Yeah.
I think administratively, from a procedural standpoint, we would probably have to make some changes. And if we were hosting a meeting off-site, we'd probably have to post some additional signage on the doors so that people know and cite this particular ordinance.
And that would be an enforcement issue. We'd have to show that knowledge and intent.
So on the same note, what if someone wasn't aware of this ordinance and walked into our council meeting with an open carry? What would be the enforcement? How do we handle that? They just did it by accident.
If, if we can't prove that knowledge and intent to violate that ordinance, then we advise law and ask them to leave.
If, let's say you're not here, there's no law enforcement here, how do we handle that?
Call us.
Okay.
We would probably also put some additional signage on the outside of the building as well.
Mr. Stevens, point of clarification, are we talking about this chamber being able to bring concealed carry, but not this office spaces upstairs?
That is correct.
What are we doing for the rest of the employees in the city? Are any of those spaces able to be enshrined with that same level of protection?
That is a policy discussion far beyond what we're talking about today.
Okay.
And would that be not acceptable under the Supreme Court case and the state law? I mean, in other words, do we not have the ability to go beyond this description here?
That is precisely the problem because absent the city administrator or the elected officials of the city having an office, it's not a sensitive space under Bruin.
Amy?
So I appreciate your policy question, Chief, but the law doesn't support it.
I don't mean to be a fly in the ointment. I just, it made me think of those other employees.
Absolutely. Maybe just a follow-up to that question, and then I do have a separate requested edit. Within this building, you have employees who sit behind glass upstairs, and then you also have employees who sit across the lower atrium from where we currently are. Are the folks who sit across that lower atrium, is that considered a private or a public space? Because sometimes that door is open and members of the public use those restrooms, and sometimes it is closed.
We have authorized personnel only on both sets of doors. So when the doors are closed, it's not open to the public. When the doors to the restrooms are open, that area is open to the public. But then there's another sign for the next set of doors that says authorized personnel only.
Okay. So the way that we're proposing potentially wording it in here, the authorized personnel only, would differentiate between public and private space?
Yeah, it would get some additional signage.
My other question, it's great to hear you say, Chief, that, you know, that it requires a person knowingly carrying for it to be a misdemeanor, and that if it is unintentional or inadvertent, that it's an education and a request.
Yes, ma'am.
My other question is with regard to D. It states it shall not be a violation of subsections B and C above if the person, well, da, 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 and then gives all of these exclusions. I guess I'm a little bit confused as to why C is included there. I think that those, that list of people who are allowed to carry into a courthouse, I don't know why they would be permitted to, like, I don't understand why they would be permitted to, why they would be treated any differently than any other member of the public in here.
Because that's frankly consistent with both state law and federal law in terms of if you are carrying it as part of your official duties, you don't have to essentially disarm to come if you're doing public business. This is intended, and Senate Bill 24131 was intended to address sort of the sensitive spaces doctrine in Bruin, but always excluding, and both at state and federal, those that are carrying a weapon that are authorized to do those, so as part of their job duties. So, you know, if Fremont County Sheriff came to a meeting at Canyon City Hall, they would not, and it was in the private space, for example, they would not be required to disarm.
I think I'm thinking less about local law enforcement, less about local law enforcement personnel, and if we had, say, the recruiter for the, for US Armed Forces wanted to come in and give us a spiel, or if we had a defense council personnel who was in here because their client in their infinite wisdom wanted to make a public statement about an issue that they're having with the city. Like, I don't, but state law says that all of those people, regardless of what the sensitive space is?
Yeah. It's performing official duties. So I can't just put my uniform on if I'm coming as a member of the public, but if I'm coming to that meeting as part of my official duties.
Okay, thank you.
Emily?
I, I just wanted to note that in section A, I think there's just a typo or two that I don't think has been made note of yet, that that sentence in A, it should say to carry a concealed firearm, so it needs ED on the end of conceal, and maybe firearm is singular, and then I think it needs the word in after that last firearm before the colon. Carry a concealed firearm in.
And then I think the change to, if council wants to effectuate the change that we just spoke of related to the private area, I think in subsection B, where it references a person committing a misdemeanor if they knowingly and unlawfully carry, and it's any firearm, so it's open or concealed carry, in that sentence, it talks about in any courthouse, in any other building or portion of building used for court proceedings, and I would add, or in any space not open to the public, in any building in which the official office of any elected member of the city council or city administrator is located. So I think that is how you capture council's direction in, in terms of both amending A3 and then making it consistent with what Councilmember Tracy indicated, it clear that it is a violation to bring any weapon into that area.
So would you read that whole sentence, please?
Yes. So subsection B would read as follows. A person commits a misdemeanor if a person knowingly and unlawfully carries and is in possession of a firearm in any courthouse or in, or any other building or portion of a building used for court proceedings, or in any space not open to the public within any building in which the official office of any elected member of the city council or city administrator is located. So it attempts to capture the exact same language in subsection A3 that is the authorization for allowing conceal, carry in the public space within the building, but prohibiting it in the space not open to the public.
Amy?
Just for clarity's sake, so city employees would also not be allowed to carry their own personal firearms unless they were CCPD, obviously.
And that is already in place.
Oh.
That's part of the employee handbook.
Thank you.
You know, at this point, maybe you should redo it and bring it back with the one we would consider. I, I think you're making a mistake. I think open carry, concealed carry, I'd rather see the, somebody that has a gun, frankly. When you're trying to make these restrictions, you're, you're making a mess out of it, but I don't get a vote, so, but I don't agree with you. You can say it all you want, it's intimidating, anything else, police officer might be too. I'd like to see the gun, personally, if you're carrying. And I have a permit. But we can. Well, I think if you wish to, I think we can even clean it up. I do agree, I think the public space upstairs, that's why we had the glass, maybe you could add that and leave everything else alone. That's counsel. That's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So I, I would definitely not be in favor of doing nothing because then that prohibits concealed carry, open carry everywhere within city buildings, which I'm not in favor of. But the, I think it is a good suggestion because I'm not sure that, that I've captured it all, and if I was going to be making a motion, I'm not sure that I got all of the edits that we have been talking about. Does somebody have all of the edits that we've been talking about?
I do, but I also understand, I mean, I can do it either way. I could bring it back, or I could certainly read them into the record and make sure everyone that I've captured them appropriately.
It's a pleasure, Council. I would like to see it redone and brought back. It's not going to hurt anything. Right now, we're functioning without anything anyway.
I, I myself, my, I'm, I'm good with that, but I'm also good with proceeding with the vote, with having our attorney read the changes into the ordinance for the first ordinance.
We've looked, we have worked on this for a long time. We've discussed it on many occasions in public, and I think if our attorney reads it in as it needs to be, I'm happy to go ahead and vote.
Emily?
I was just going to say the same thing. I, I think if we have the language clear, and I have notes, and I, if our attorney has notes, I, I'm comfortable with going forward with voting on this on first reading this evening.
And we would get another shot at it if there was some error that crept in.
And, and I'm happy to just read it now, and if you all are comfortable, it could be so moved, and if not, then we could bring it back.
Go ahead, read it.
So subsection A of 9.52.010, within the concealed carry opt-out version of the ordinance, would be modified to read as follows. A person who holds a valid permit to carry a concealed firearm is hereby permitted to carry a concealed firearm in, colon. And then subsection, or sub subsection three within subsection A would read, the spaces open to the public within any building in which the official office of any elected member of the city council or city administrator is located. And then subsection B would be amended to read as follows. And then subsection B would be amended to read as follows. "A person commits a misdemeanor if a person knowingly and unlawfully carries and is in possession of a firearm in any courthouse or any other building or portion of a building used for court proceedings, or in any space not open to the public in any building in which the official office of any elected member of the city council or city administrator is located."
Well, then I would ask for a motion.
I move, Mayor.
Oh, wait a minute.
Got another one?
Sorry.
Sorry. Attorney Hoffman, did you also originally say that C3?
Yeah, and I went to D, to B instead because I think B is a better place to make that amendment because it's the all-inclusive, no concealed or open carry in those locations.
And before Andrea, just a minute, Kathy?
I was just going to go with the motion, so go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Andrea.
Mayor Troutman, I move that we go ahead and adopt the first reading of ordinance number 12, series of 2025, concealed carry opt-out, and ordinance of the City of Canyon City amending chapter 9.52 of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning firearms and to partially opt out of SB 24-131.
Second.
Made in second, any discussion on that motion?
And just to confirm, that is with the changes that I read into the record.
Yes, with the changes read in by our attorney into the record.
Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, I think that takes care of the agenda, and we're adjourned.